I also move that the Amherst County Service Authority Board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted. From the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session, and we need a roll call vote. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin votes aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
All in his favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Service Authority is adjourned. Mr. Pugh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I look, please. I'm trying to hide behind this microphone. Although my big hair won't.
It's a nice place.
This should be here, it's right there. Did you make it out of this?
James River Association is just actually providing the appropriations. Is that correct?
This is revenue that we're receiving from them.
Okay.
So, we're incorporating that into the budget so we can pay the bills and so forth. So, this is their share of that. We contracted for them.
All right. Any questions, Board?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the April 5th, 2022 meeting.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And of course, Ms. Tucker is abstaining from that vote.
And Mr. Pugh, I would, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve items B and C on the consent agenda.
All right. Any discussion? Motion on the floor, on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we've got old business. We've got the FY '23 and O and M and CIP budget adoption. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you. We have presented the budget multiple times. We have conducted a public hearing at which we, the board, received no comment. We've waited the statute to minimum statutory seven days, and we are asking that the board adopt the budget as previously presented, and there's been no changes since the public hearing. So, as it was presented, we request that you adopt the budget and the CIP.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Thank you, Stacy, for all the work you've done, county staff. We appreciate it. Hopefully, all things considered, it's pretty good, and there's no tax increase in the budget, and there's a good pay increase for the employees. So, I hope all is well with that, and everybody is happy. It's been a tough year and a tough couple of years, actually. So, it's good to see that we're moving forward in a positive direction. So, thank you all again for all the work you've put in, and we certainly do appreciate it. Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board adopt Resolutions 2022-0005-R through 2022-008-R as presented.
There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Ayers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next, we have new business. Mr. Patrick Nally, please come up. This is regarding a study funding analysis for a grant application?
Yes. I don't know how much you know about the LWCF grant application we've applied for, but there are certain things we have to do for NEPA, environmental concerns, and engineering costs, just to be able to apply for the grant. I tried to actually get out of these, just saying, you know, for a small community, it's hard to invest thousands of dollars into a project that you don't know you're going to be awarded yet. But we have made it out of the regional phase, and we are pushed on to the National Park Service. I don't know if you've received a call last week from Representative Klein supporting the project. NAACP has also sent an email, a letter, supporting the project since then. So, we're on a good track to get awarded this project, and these are just the engineering and the documents we need to turn to the National Park Service to let them know that this is a realistic project, and we're moving forward with it.
Oh, yes. I certainly did receive a call from his office regarding the grant, and I think it's a good idea that we go forward with this. If you're at this point, then I think you have a legitimate shot at getting the grant.
It'd be pretty, it's kind of a game changer. It's a big grant, so it would be a good one.
Do you all have any questions?
Mr. Rogers, where is this coming from? On our game?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. I think it's worth, for $6,250, you know, hopefully, this will be a game changer, like you said, and with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the Board appropriate $6,250 to pay for the pre-grant application, professional services for the LWCF grant for the Seminole Park and Mill Creek Lake Park. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Nally. Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
People from Ginsville say hello to you.
All right. Okay. Next, we have tax exemptions for nonprofits. Mr. Mrs. Jane Erby, would you come up here for us?
I've invited, well, I've invited Ms. Erby to come and answer questions if you have any, if I could introduce the topic.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
This is a bit unusual. This is not a topic raised by staff or by the Board. This is raised by the Johnson Health Center. They're requesting a tax exemption as a nonprofit medical provider in the county. State law provides that the Board of Supervisors can issue this tax exemption. So, I couldn't answer their question, and neither can anyone else but you all. So, it is before you. The research that we've done is that Johnson's made this request back in 2014, and the request was about to be presented to the Board for a policy discussion, and that's when my predecessor, I think, tendered his resignation, and then he went through the selection process, and the whole thing got dropped. And so, it's been silent for seven years or so, and they have simply renewed their request again for the same thing. Our research has shown that none of the surrounding communities offer a tax exemption for nonprofit medical providers. The law does give tax exemption status to those that are associated with a hospital. So, anybody that's connected to Centra, you know, they get the tax exemption already. But Johnson's is not. It's private, and so, it is not entitled to a tax exemption unless you grant it. You have the numbers there on how much revenue they, the conditions that have to be met, and the revenue that we would lose by giving them the tax exemption. And with that, I'll try to answer questions, but I've asked Mr. Erby here in case I can't.
Yeah, I have a question. So, they're a nonprofit, which are typically already tax exempt, right?
That is correct.
Why are they not tax exempt? You're shaking your hand. I mean, could somebody answer that?
Well, there's state law versus federal law. So, they don't, they don't pay federal taxes, but under, and you can jump in here, Mark, but, but under state law and locally, they can be taxed, and they are taxed in other localities.
Okay. I'm just asking. So, if you could explain that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah. No, the tax exemption that you commonly hear is an organization is a 501(c)(3), right? And that refers to the federal regulations that provide for tax exemption under that particular provision. But that doesn't necessarily exempt them from local taxation or state taxation. You know, states can follow suit and basically say if you are a 501(c)(3), then you're automatically tax exempt from, for our purposes as well. But in Virginia, you've got this kind of quirk where the Code of Virginia allows localities to determine who is tax exempt and who is not tax exempt based on certain criteria. And I think if you looked at your, the Board packet, there's like eight criteria that you're supposed to analyze before determining whether or not you should grant tax exemption. Now, it's completely a local decision, and so, they've given the local governments the option to decide for themselves. Now, it's one of those rarities, because usually, local governments are not given a whole lot of options, but at least in this particular case, you are given the opportunity to make the decision for yourself.
All right. So, Mr. Rogers, did I hear you say that other localities do not give them the exemption?
That is correct.
Okay. They are operating in Campbell County?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Lynchburg. Lynchburg has not been taxing them, but they're about to start because they realize that they should have been.
I just wanted to, Mr. Chairman, I may, I just want to give my perspective on this and why, why I really do want to grant them the, their request. It's because Amherst County qualifies as an underserved county when it comes to healthcare access and ease of getting to a physician. Most of the people that Johnson's treat are Medicaid patients. For a Medicaid patient to try to find a provider is extremely difficult in Amherst County. It is very, very difficult because there just aren't that many that are taking Medicaid patients. Johnson's does. It is my feeling that this is one of the things that we can do to help them continue to serve that community that needs healthcare access so badly. That's my thinking. That's why I support the request.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I've got some of the same concerns. They're the only healthcare provider, for the most part, that can serve and take care of those throughout their community that unfortunately don't have access, you know, to insurance or other healthcare plans, you know, that would benefit them, you know. And I find it hard to believe that, you know, the other localities with what the Johnson Health Center does, that, you know, they are not, when you look at Centra, is the size of medical facilities that they have, and they do not, is, you know, that's where I've got a little bit of concern with this as well, because of the sector of our community that they provide services to. It's, it's very needed.
So, yeah, I think I would go to the eight criteria, right? And maybe one of you can help me with this, but I could assume, you know, number one, is it exempt from taxation pursuant to 501(c) of Internal Revenue Code? Yeah, they are. Do they have a current annual alcoholic beverage license? I doubt it. Okay. Is any director, officer, or employee paid in excess of reasonable allowance for salaries? I doubt that. All right. Any net earnings of such organization ensures to the benefit of any individual? Probably not.
They're non-profit.
All right. Whether the organization provides services for the common good of the public?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Whether a substantial part of the activities of the organization involves carrying on propaganda or otherwise influenced legislation? I don't think they're that kind of organization. The revenue impact to the locality and its taxpayers of exempting the property? What are we talking about? $12,000? And any other criteria, facts, and circumstances that the governing body deems pertinent to the adoption of such ordinance? So, I think looking at those criteria, you could reasonably get to the fact that it's would be reasonable to exempt them based on the clientele they are serving. And if, Ms. Tucker, you want to make that motion, I would.
Um, Mr. Chairman, one second, please.
I have a question. Mr. Popovich?
Yes, sir.
Is, would Mr. Martin's review of those criteria be satisfactory, or do we need to put a package in front of the Board that addresses each one so that they can say that they did? I mean, his review is captured in the minutes, or they are his assumptions and speculations.
I think for, for one thing, I was going to stop you before you made a motion, because in order to do this, if you want to go forward with this, you have to have a public hearing, you have to adopt an ordinance. Within that ordinance would be your findings as to these criteria. And so, quite frankly, I think it probably would be best that we do a little research to be able to answer yes or no to those questions, right? And specifically have that as backup material to that ordinance that, once the public hearing is over, you can officially act on, and then they will be considered tax exempt.
Okay. I didn't make the motion. I said, Ms. Tucker, if you would like to. So, Ms. Tucker, if you would like to move it forward to a public hearing, I would be good.
Well, before we get there?
I think we got to direct staff to do the.
Yeah, we have to go through that whole process of looking at each individual item.
Wouldn't that be part of the information that's meant to us for the public hearing?
It would be part of it.
Just don't set the date for the hearing.
Yeah. Either, either way, I wasn't a strong proponent of either way. I mean, I see that it's three members of the Board here are adamant about it, so I'm fine with moving this forward and going through a public hearing. So, Ms. Tucker, if you would like.
I may have one more question for our attorney.
Yes.
Is there a deadline? Does this have to be complete before the new budget year starts?
No. There's, there's no, I mean, you can, you can adopt these ordinances anytime you want.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I am going to make a motion to direct county staff to prepare a package to look at, to answer the policy questions on making Johnson's an unexempt entity as suggested by the county attorney.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, you'll bring that back to us, whether it's next month or whenever, whenever it's ready.
Yeah. We'll have to get the information from Johnson's for the most part.
But a reasonable amount of time.
With all due dispatch. Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry to put you on the spot, Ms. Erby. I didn't know if we were gonna. All right. Okay. Next, we have county administrators' reports. We have Boards, Commissions, Committees. We have a vacancy on the Agricultural Committee. Mr. Rogers?
Yes, sir. You can see there, I'm trying to get to it myself.
All right. I've got it right here. We have a vacancy on the Board, Agricultural Board. It looks like we have Tyler Price has submitted his information to be a member of that Board. Did we have any, anyone else?
No, nope. Mr. Chairman, no one else has applied. I have not had an opportunity yet to talk to the Board about this individual. I don't personally know him, so I think that they need to weigh in, nor have I talked to Eric Bowen yet.
All right.
Is it something that's not something, the appointment's not due, not up until when? Dean, June?
Uh, well, the, the seat expired in, back in December.
That's right. Yeah. I forgot.
And so, this, this is for one of the two-year terms. I mean, we can, we can delay. I mean.
I would just rather talk to everybody and make sure everybody's on board.
Sure. We can put it off till the next meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you need a motion or?
Uh, no, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just bring it back.
All right. Just bring it back to the next meeting, let everyone get a little more comfortable with what.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I got a couple of other items.
All right. Under.
County administrators.
All right. Mr. Rogers, what else do you have for us?
I would like to invite Mr. Randy Nixon to come forward, just to introduce him. As you all have heard, Mr. Nally has accepted a position with Henrico County. We lose another good one, but we've hired a good one in his place. Mr. Nixon is already working in, well, I'll let you introduce yourself. Go ahead, Randy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rogers. As Dean said, my name is Randy Nixon, and I've been with the county now for about seven months, and I got some big shoes to fill, literally and figuratively. And Patrick's been a great boss, and I appreciate the opportunity that he gave me and hired me as the Recreation Specialist, and Dean has now given me the opportunity to be the Director of the Department. And I come with 28 years of experience in parks and recreation. I'm a firm believer that Recreation Department is a public relations arm of the county, and I believe tourism falls into that. It goes hand in hand. We serve the people of the community and the citizens of this county, but we also want to serve those people coming into the county that are going to spend money. And hopefully, we can improve on that and make things happen within the county. I want to, hopefully, my biggest goal, which looks like it's going to be a huge grant that we've got coming for a couple of parks, it's going to keep me busy for a little while. I plan on making that happen, but I also want to make sure we keep our programs, our athletic programs, our soccer and basketball, some of the other things that we do, you know, that are high quality, and we like to improve upon those and to, to actually increase the number of programs that we do. And I look forward to doing it, and I appreciate Mr. Rogers giving me, having the confidence in me to do that. So, thank you.
Well, congratulations. We look forward to getting to know you a little better. We certainly will miss Mr. Nally. He's heading down to the, near the city, I suppose, wants to get out, get away from the country. So, we certainly do appreciate it, and we hope if there's anything we can do for you, just feel free. The door's always open, or the phone's always.
I'm sure I'll be back here in front of you guys.
Board, anything else? Well, just congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir. Mr. Nally will miss you, but Godspeed to you.
Another item I wanted to bring to the Board's attention is that the Architectural Partners, the firm doing the feasibility study for the Amherst-Nelson Agricultural Complex, believes that they're done, and they're about to send me a link to their study. I haven't yet received it, and when I do, I'm going to send it out to each of you and to all the stakeholders that we've accumulated with regard to that, to ask them to review the study to see if they consider it to be complete. I'll also send out the scope of work so you can compare whether they've done what we've asked them to do, whether there's any refinements needed. The, the basic gist of the report is that the property that's been identified would be feasible for the agricultural complex, but they, you know, they want, they want people to review their work and be satisfied with it, so please be on the lookout for that. And finally, you have in front of you a letter from Robert Richards. Is Mr. Richards here? There you are. Okay. I assumed that he would speak to you at the Citizen Comments at the beginning. I assume that he'll address you at Citizen Comments at the end, so I'm not going to talk anymore about that this time. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there anything from our county attorney?
No, sir.
All right. Next, we have liaison and committee reports. The first item is the Planning Commission, which I sit on. We had several short-term, we have one short-term tour, which will come before us on River Road, and that passed, that will be coming before us. They seem to be very, very popular these days. Tractor Supply will begin to sell, if it passes the Board, sell propane at their location in Madison Heights, and the Planning Commission will begin to incorporate the Central Virginia Master Plan into the Comprehensive Plan. So, the, the Board has been very busy, and those items will be becoming for us, before us at our next meeting. Next, we have Mr. Ayers.
Board, we had the Emergency Services had their meeting on Wednesday of last week. Had good attendance to the meeting. Mr. Bryant was there, as well as representatives from all the EMS and fire agencies in the county. They had discussions on some policy changes and whatnot, discussions on some generator equipment for a couple of the Rescue Squad Buildings, Station 3. I think they've pretty much completed that building, Sam, and do have that facilitated by a generator, and then the Nelson Building is looking at getting a generator for that building as well. And I think Pedlar is upgrading or getting one up there, because that, that building a lot of times is used for backup in the event that citizens up in that area needs emergency shelter. So, those guys and gals, as well as Director Bryant, do a good job in taking care of us. So, that's kind of where we're standing.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Appreciate that, and all the work that the Emergency Services Council does. Next, we have the Community Criminal Justice Board. Mr. Rogers?
You have the meeting notes from your package, but I just want to let you know that we are now a member of the Community Criminal Justice Board. This is because we received a grant that gives us pre- and post-trial services for people going through the criminal court process. So, pre-trial reports to the judge, and then, and then post-trial reports that they use for probation and that sort of thing. And so, that entitles us to a seat on that Board. This was the organizational meeting at which they elected a chair and others, and other officers, and so, I'll be attending that on behalf of the Board. I don't expect there to be any issues to come before us, but, but that's just one more thing that we're involved in. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All right. Next, we'll move on to something interesting. We will listen to our Economic Development Authority Board give their annual report. Mr. Chad Eby, if you'd come forward.
Okay, yeah. Looks like it's on. All right. Well, while he's calling it up, I'll go ahead and get started. So, one thing I'd like to point out, you'll note that the report is titled the 2019 to 2021 Annual Report. There is a reason for that. I know we're kind of talking about this past year, but we have actually adopted into our strategic plan that we'll produce a document like this every year. But this being the first time that we've done that document, it kind of encompasses everything, and also to note, we've, I do have some notes at the end that I'll share that discuss items that we've accomplished in 2022, since this report is just through 2021. There we go.
You might scroll it. You just roll it as you go.
Okay.
It's a PEF.
Great. Will do. Okay. So, the EDA has had some excellent success with our, with our grants. We've talked a little bit about this in the past, but we were able to help 50 businesses and 17 nonprofits with a little over $5.6 million in, in grants that were awarded and administered by the EDA. As I go through the presentation today, I'll talk a little bit more about, about the specifics of these, but this first page kind of gives you an overview of, of what they were. Kind of interesting, at the bottom of the first page, we're talking about the economic dashboard, just in this three-year period, the average weekly wages have grown significantly in our county from $699 to $760. At the same time, the unemployment rate has obviously peaked, but then come down to lower than it was when this timeframe started in 2019, and taxable sales in the same period have increased pretty significantly.
Can I, can I ask you a question? And you may not be able to answer this, but the average weekly wages, would any of those, the money that the government gave to individuals throughout that period, would that have been included as part of their salary or in part of the study? Because do you?
Well, I, I, we can certainly look into that. I don't personally know off the top of my head. All I can tell you is in the businesses that I run, we, we, I mean, we're good people. We want people to make more money, but we have had to raise wages.
To get interest in.
To, to, you know, keep our people employed. So, I, I'm assuming that, that a lot of this is, is the same sort of thing, where employers in Amherst County are competing for those workers that they're actually wanting to work.
Yeah.
So, and that's great for the workers, you know?
Oh, yes.
As an employer, it's, you know, you have to adjust, and it's not easy, but, but for the employees, it's, it's great. So, really, going down to the bottom of the second page, responding to COVID-19, so a lot of the, you know, the EDA's resources were, as you know, developed or devoted to helping our businesses. You know, this kind of first batch of $1.8 million in COVID relief grants, starting with money that was the EDA's, $25,000 that the EDA put together right in the beginning, and then into the, the Department of Housing and Community Development Grant that was for $569,000, and then the award for $550,000 for the Department of Housing and Community Development Backing Business Grant, and then we also managed all the Amherst COVID, County COVID Grants. The important thing is to mention about that is that those grants were actually, the, the grant writing and administration was done by our staff. So, that was a huge undertaking that, that our staff took on, obviously, in conjunction with the Finance Director, which we, which we highly appreciate, but it was a big task, and we're, you know, very proud that we were involved with that, and the county was involved. So, onto the third page. Sorry, I need to. A little bit about some of the things that, that we've done with attracting businesses. We assisted four companies with expansions and new project development, along with providing more than 50 businesses with one-on-one guidance. So, starting with SNS True Ball, they entered the Valley Program, which is a two-year international business acceleration program. I actually personally have some experience with that program. I was part of it years ago. It was a great program put on by the VDP. ITG entered in the Virginia Economic Gardenering Program, which provides qualifying second-stage companies with custom resources to identify and resolve distinct growth challenges that traditional business assistance and incentives do not address. We've got Camp Trapezeum. We all know about it, located in the former Sammer, Amherst Milling Company, opened in June of last year, and there was obviously a lot of effort that went into that project to save that landmark. We're also really excited about Virginia Foam expanding into a 4,300 square foot building in the Amalon Commerce Center. They are, I believe they're moved in and up and running, so that's great. The EDA responded to an increase in new business development inquiries in 2019 and 20. 20 by creating individual marketing proposals for company. And, you know, we've talked a lot about Phelps Road, but it did open in 2021. That was obviously a, a huge undertaking that was successful. They are at almost full capacity now. So that, that's definitely an example of when we all come together, we can, we can get things done, and that was, that was a good one. So another thing that we're working on is developing sites and buildings for growth. A key strategy in retaining and growing businesses and attracting new companies to have developed sites and buildings. So obviously, we've got the park, and we're doing a lot of work out there, and we've been doing a lot of work. But this past year, we were awarded a $3 million U S E D A grant to build a, our own multi-tenant building, which is going to be a 45,000 square foot building that can be divided up and multiple businesses can share, can share that building. We're in the, doing a lot of planning for the building right now. December or January, we'll actually be going out to bid, and we'll see what the, the actual costs of the thing are going to be at the time. So we were awarded a $250,000 grant from Go Virginia. This was a very hard-to-get grant. I believe there was a adjoining county that was also going for this grant, did not achieve it as we did. But we used the money to grade Lot 4, which is the largest in the Amalon Commerce Center, to be pad-ready, which, in case you don't know, it's very important for us in the, in the Commerce Centers or anywhere where we own land in the future to have sites that are, that are ready for businesses to come, because businesses will look at the timeframe and the expense to, to get up and running. So the closer we can get to actually, you know, having them building their building in advance, the better. So we, we did complete the due diligence on the Dillard Track, and we were awarded a $160,000 Go Virginia grant to help pay for the $500,000 redevelopment plan for the Central Virginia Training Center, which is, all of you know, is, is in process. So we are really working on building a future, you know, community capacity, and we support a wide range of community initiatives to help advance economic development, such as managed financial requests from the county, including county bond modification, the fire truck, financing, animal shelter, bond financing, community development, block grant funding for homes in the Old Town Madison Heights. As we know, the Madison Heights Master Plan is underway, and we conducted in, last year, the first, there's been several now, joint workshop between the E D A and the Amherst County Sewer Authority to open a dialogue about future development in the county, which we're very happy about. We're also developing the workforce for the future, retaining and developing and attracting talented workers is the number-one issue. As anybody who's involved in a business knows, this is a challenge today, probably more than in any other time that I've been in Amherst County. And the E D A continues to work with the county and public schools, the college, and workforce development partners to advance business and education partners. So as you know, our board is made up of myself, Calvin Cannon, Dan Sweeney, Andrew Proctor, Patrick Dreher, Mike Russell, Shelley Hunt, and Ella Lewis is our youth representative, at least for the next couple of months. We'll be advertising for the next, the next youth representative very soon. Before I go into what we've, what we're, what we've already done in 2022, I, I would like to note that we had, we've had a lot of activity in, in the past year or two years from companies, you know, looking at Amherst as a potential place to, to go for their business. And, and we do, we do feel like at the current trajectory that the Amalon Commerce Center will be, will be full in the not-too-distant future. So we will, we will be looking for a place to expand for the next, next place for Commerce Park in the, in the coming years. So keep note of that. But in 2022, after this report was, was written, the E D A did sell our building to the I T G, our Integrated Technology Group. It was a, you know, they were in their leasing from us for many years. They made a major investment, or we did, actually gave them a chance, and now they bought the building and they're here to stay. Frank Good Builders has purchased Lot 2 in the Amalon Commerce Center. I don't think this is, it's up here. No, it's not. And it's the first lot on the left as you enter, enter the, the park. Frank Good Builders are currently located in Forest, and the building will be about 7,000 square feet with a pretty nice investment to, to get into that building. We've already talked about the Central Virginia Training Center Master Redevelopment Plan was completed, was accepted by you all, and has been adopted into the comprehensive plan. And the E D A is allocating $15,000 to match the Route 29 Business Beautification Committee grant funds, which will double the impact the grants have on the facade and the grounds, improvements for business on U S 29 Business Corridor. The E D A continues to advocate for our local businesses and on business issues, the impact Amherst County, such as the C V T C bonds defeesment issue, the River Edge Park Vista Extension, and the Madison Heights Master Plan, among other issues. Great local manufacturers continue to grow, and the E D A continues to receive applications from qualifying businesses and administer, or the, administrate the incentive program. And the E D A was able to assist the county in saving funds on a fire truck by getting approval for the E D A within 24 hours to secure a better price for that fire truck. So that is my report. Is there any questions, comments?
Yes, we'll certainly appreciate all the work you have done. I know you all have had a interesting couple of years. All the money that came in through the federal government and the grants and all those grant programs, I'm sure that was a lot of work to get through that and to make sure everyone was eligible and who could get it and who could not. And then by looking at this, you all have stayed busy and, and have spent the money that is provided by the county very wisely, and we've got some good things that have came out of this, some new buildings and some grants. So we certainly do appreciate you, Mr. Eby, and the rest of your staff and, and the board, as well as Victoria Hansen and Lori Saunders. We appreciate all that you've done, taken, taken the time out of your, your day and your life to do this for the county. So we certainly do appreciate that, because we all know you're a busy man as well in your professional career.
Well, I, I would like to add to that, that, that I really do believe that our board, you know, I guess the best way to say it, does this at our, our pleasure. You know, nobody, nobody is forcing our board to, to do this, you know, but they are all very active and, and really do care about this, this thing that we do. So, you know, thank you for your kind words, but I would like to say, just from, from, you know, our staff and board, I mean, it's, it's kind of more of a, I guess, a passion than anything else.
A labor of love.
Yeah, it's, it's like a, it's like an addiction, you know? Once you're, once you're in it, you, you just, you can't, you can't get out, you know? So anyway.
And board, anything else?
I, I do have, I've got just a question, maybe this one is more for Mr. Rogers. As we get more and more into the solicitation of grants and looking at different grants, are we doing anything as far as a review to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences that would be outside the fabric of what this community believes in? And I say that because we ran into that in, in another area, where you take money, but if you take money, you're on the hook to do other things. So as we move forward, are we, what is our process to make sure that we're all comfortable with what the requirements of these grants are? And I don't think this probably ever applies to the E D A, but I don't know.
There, there, there is no formal process, other than as we get the grants and we look at what's required. Poor Stacy is just swimming in grants. Almost every grant has its own training program that she has to go to also. So we're quite eager to get our grants administrator here. We, I've asked my executive assistant to schedule another meeting of the Joint Board Committee, which is the School Board and the Board of Supervisors, to talk about things like curriculum and the federal requirements that come with their money. I can tell you, as a staff, we're kind of fed up with Department of Transportation requirements and the long, hard tail that they swing at us when we take their money. And I, I, I mean, personally, I'm, I'm ready to stop taking money, especially if it comes with requirements that we don't believe are true or correct. And I, and it, you know, we can't do that for the School Board, for instance. They have to do that for themselves. But there's a new school superintendent, and we'll be, I think we'll be eager to learn his attitude about that sort of thing. But no, ma'am, there is no formal process, but we are sensitive to...
There is an awareness.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, it's just the treasurer's report for your information only. Any questions on that? Next, we'll go on to citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Please come forward and state your district of residence.
My name is Robert Richards. I'm in District 1. I didn't expect to be here the second time around for the same subject. As you know, I was here before talking about the deed to a property that I purchased through a tax sale. We finally got that straightened around, but there were some issues involved in that. We asked Mr. Schrader and Mr. Goat's office to correct the error in the title, and they wrote out a draft of that, gave it to me to have it noted, have it recorded at the courthouse. I stopped off at Main Street Settlements, had them look at it. They seen errors into that, so I sent it back to Mr. Goat's office, and then he wrote out another one. Main Street Settlements was not happy with it, but they accepted it. I'm not happy with the way it was rolled out and the, especially the last paragraph in that, that's in bold print. But I had to have it recorded in order, because I was underneath the timeline, as I talked to you gentlemen before about that. Either I did it or I lost the, the amount of money I'd have to, the interest on that loan. So either that, either that or wait to have it done correctly according to Main Street and myself, or, or lose the tax advantage I would have on that deed. So I went ahead and filed it, and it's through, you know, it's filed in the courthouse now. But there are issues in there. If you look at the letter on that and you look at the bold print, I don't know if you would all agree with me or not, or you would accept it in that form, where, you know, basically says they have no responsibility, they didn't do nothing. You know, I, it's my responsibility to hire a lawyer to look it over or look it over myself. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not familiar with it. I'm going by what Main Street, they do it every day, so I'm going by what they say. So basically, the bottom line is I'm asking for someone other than Mr. Schrader or Mr. Goat's office to look at it, possibly your, your attorney to look at it and see if there are errors in there or are corrections to be made. And, you know, does the county have any responsibility after this? Because the way it's stated, you have no responsibility whatsoever. It's just out there, because you accept nothing, the way it's rolled out. So I really don't know what else to say, other than I'm asking, you know, for someone other than their office to look at it. There's been, this whole thing's been a nightmare to us. There's been several errors in there. We've been through it, they handled it the first time, and there's another issue along with that, but it's not your responsibility. I mean, because I bought another joint piece of property and wanted that join into one, which has not been done yet, but that's, that's not your responsibility. The only thing I'm asking for you is to look at the original title that was bought underneath the tax sale, make sure it's 100% correct, and we will not have no errors or issues in the future.
All right, we appreciate it. That's something that's going to need to be either handled by Mr. Popovich or Mr. Rogers. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not familiar with all that neither. I don't know if there's anything we can do. Other than that, if there's something that we can do, we will let you know, and...
I have a process question. If we sell something at an estate at a, a tax sale, we're not obligated to make sure that what we have sold is actually, that the, that the boundaries and everything are correct and the title is correct?
Correct, that is correct. That's standard practice. Yes, ma'am. The onus of, of title, clean title and, you know, survey and all of that falls on the purchaser. Purchasers of property can go out and get title insurance, which will then dictate whether or not the property is correctly defined, described in the deed. And so they can rely on the title insurance company to cover any potential costs if there are inaccuracies. So as a practical matter, every tax sale attorney that I know always incorporates this language at the end, because they are not taking any responsibility. Their, their whole role and only role is to simply sell the property for recovery of taxes. They are not hired to do title searches and do all that kind of investigative work. Their sole job is simply to sell the property. So that's why this language is normally very typically found in tax sale deeds. All right?
A question for you. So what you're saying is you have the right to sell a piece of property without doing no due diligence, and there could be a lien on it, there could be other claims onto it, and so now it goes back to the person that bought that property? So you have no, no obligation? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm, well, what I'm saying is that the county does not have the obligation, because it's not the county's property. The county is simply selling the property to recover taxes owed. If it were the county's property being sold directly, yes, it is our responsibility to make sure that there are no liens on there, but because we are effectively just a third-party effectuating a sale between two other people, it's not normally the county's responsibility to take on that obligation.
All right. Does that make sense?
What's that?
Does that make sense? Come see me and explain it to you.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but no, it does not make sense. I specifically disagree, because what you're telling me is, I could buy that piece of property, years later, there could be a claim against that, and any, anything that I could put on it, it's just too bad, you don't own it, I got a fourth claim, and I lost everything. The only thing I could recuperate possibly is if I had title insurance on it, would be the initial purchase price, and you're out of everything else. So I don't see that as fair. I don't see that as a county should take that position.
All right. Well, Mr. Richards, I think we've answered all your questions. I appreciate you coming up here, and hopefully it all works out for the better.
Okay, thank you.
All right, board, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments, and we'll go to matters from members of the board. Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Ayers?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Martin?
No, sir.
And I have nothing. Next, we will go into closed session. I will make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, dash 3711, subsection 8.3, for the purpose of discussion related to consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly-held prop, real property, where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically relating to the acquisition of properties located in District 2. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I want to make a motion that we come out of closed session. Who's got that, uh? I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Uh, I do somewhere.
Marking, marking state.
I move that the Amherst County Board Supervisor certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
All right, the motion on full, do we gotta do a roll call vote on roll call?
Roll call, correct.
All right, Mrs. Tucker?
Uh.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
All right, now we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion on full, Mr. Ayers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.